The meeting is called to order. And I have asked Leota Marks to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you all please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Peggy will do the roll call.
Trustee Ash.
Here.
Trustee Rydenbaugh.
Here.
Trustee Daniels.
Here.
Here.
Trustee.
Trustee Maddox.
Trustee Rios.
Here.
And Trustee Townsend.
Here.
Okay. Approval of the amendments of the agenda. Do we have an amendment?
Yes, Madam Chair. On page three of your meeting book, page two of the agenda, under Separations Information, number two, Wayne Hollis is listed as resignation. That should indicate that it's an early retirement.
Madam Chair, I have a question. I did not note on the agenda the request by the, I think it's the Wind Dot West for the State Avenue revitalization, approval of adding two properties. You recall that from our meeting. It's number five on our minutes. And we said we would come back this month with an answer.
That's right.
And I understand from Attorney Wynn that it is ready for our action. So that should be added to the agenda. I'm imagining that our CFO will recommend approval.
Okay. I will call for a motion on the amendments to the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. And now approval of the agenda as amended.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay.
Aye.
Call a question, Madam Chair.
Mr. Wynn.
Do you have to call for the vote, ma'am, and vote for the approval of the amendment?
Oh, yes.
You just need the vote because they-
Call for the vote on the amendments.
Yes, ma'am.
Aye.
Aye.
Vote.
Aye. Yeah, I'm voting for it. I'm just curious where is it on the agenda? Where are we putting it in?
Item nine, unfinished business. Would it be approved?
Where is it going to go?
We do it there.
You mean in terms of the State Avenue.
Yeah, unfinished business.
Yeah.
I'd rather unfinished business than I think that's right.
I would think that's probably where we would put it. Okay. All right.
And now you need to approve the-
And now I would call for a vote on the approval of the amended agenda.
Aye.
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 Okay, so approved. Next is approval of the meeting minutes of November 11.
Move approval of the November 11 board minutes?
Second.
Have a move and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. All right, communications.
Need number five.
To share a bit of information with the board.
Excuse me, Madam President.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have-
We need to go back to five.
Yes, we're actually at Agenda Item Five. Audience to patrons of the-
Okay, are there, yes, are there any patrons? I thought we had that, yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Charlie Leader, and I have the pleasure of being the coordinator of theater here at KC KCC. And thanks to Mr. Rios, we were invited to come here. And like vampires, we always come in if invited. For candlelighting, we're only given five minutes to do what we do. So we decided, you all are pressed for time, so we're going to recreate an event we did at candlelighting just for you all. These are my students from the voice and diction class. They're going to be back here, so they can be on camera, so you can either see them there or on the monitor.
A Christmas Carol by Charles Dickens in five minutes.
Marley was dead to begin with. Ebenezer Scrooge, however, was not dead.
One Christmas Eve, old Scrooge sat busy in his counting house. His clerk, Bob Cratchit, cast an imploring look at Scrooge.
What's that? Scrooge said.
Bad point, Bob, a lot.
That imploring look, what was that?
Not imploring, never imploring, sir.
Humbug.
The door to Scrooge's shop swung open, and a handsome young gentleman stepped in.
Merry Christmas, Uncle.
Humbug.
Uncle, I only come by as I do every Christmas Eve to beg that you might join my family for Christmas dinner tomorrow.
Humbug.
Very well then.
Merry Christmas, Greg.
And a Merry Christmas to you, Bob Cratchit.
Not long afterwards, two portly gentlemen entered the offices. At this festive season of the year, it is more than usually desirable that we should make some provision for the poor and destitute.
There are no prisons.
Plenty of prisons.
And the workhouses.
They are still in operation, though I wish I could say they were not.
And the red hot pokers.
Beg pardon?
Run!
Ah-ha!
cried Scrooge, brandishing the poker from his furnace. He chased the gentleman from his offices and halfway up the street. When he returned to his office, he asked his clerk.
I suppose you'll be wanting tomorrow off.
The clerk nodded timidly, and Scrooge hit him with the poker. Later that evening, Scrooge sat in a chair by the fireplace in his own bedroom, and suddenly the fire wore it up. Then into the room came a ghostly figure.
Ebenezer. Ebenezer Scrooge.
Scrooge, coward.
Ebenezer.
The ghost was none other than Jacob Marley, Scrooge's old partner. He was cursed forever to roam the earth.
Three spirits will visit you.
Humbug.
Scrooge went to bed, but woke up sometime later. His bed curtains were being drawn open by a ghostly hand.
I see you are a spirit, are you? Then a spiritual coming was foretold to me.
I am. Come, take my hand.
Scrooge suddenly held a war-surging hand, spirit smiled, and took it in and owned. Suddenly, they were standing beside the long, wet and wretched-looking queue of men and women in leg irons, guarded by soldiers on either side. A soldier took the person in and led him up a flight of steps onto a wooden platform above which hung a mighty blade.
It is a far, far better thing that I do than I have ever done. It is far better rest than I go to then. Oops!
said the spirit. And in an instant, Scrooge was back in his bed. The world was dark and quiet. Perhaps it had been a dream. He lay back down to sleep. He woke sometime later to find rich, bright lights flooding through the gaps between his bed curtain.
Are you, are you the spirit of Christmas present? I am. Touch my robe.
There was a bright flash of light. At once, they stood in a vast, dark room full of young boys, all unwashed and wretchedly dressed and eating a porridge leaf from small wooden bowls. Suddenly, one young boy rose from his bench and walked toward a big fat fellow who stood at the head of the room.
Please, sir, I'd like some more.
Oops!
said the spirit. And once again, Scrooge was back in bed. He woke up yet one more time to find a spectral visitor in his room.
Are you the spirit of Christmas future?
The hood nodded.
You realize it's been one mistake after another so far.
The hood nodded.
I suppose we got to go through it anyway.
The hooded head nodded.
Not very organized up there, are you?
The hooded head shook from side to side. Scrooge held out his hand.
Let's get this over with.
Suddenly, they were standing in a large and musty room. Its only occupant, a ghastly old woman in a dreary yellow dress.
Come in.
Good afternoon, Miss Emerson.
Good afternoon, Pip.
The cloaked spirit shook his head, and there was a blinding flash of light. Scrooge was alone in this bedroom. No more spirits shadowed him that night. They couldn't have even if they wanted to. There was no night left. Scrooge hurried to the window and threw it open. Rush of cold air swept over him. He beheld a young boy pulling a sled along the street beneath the window.
Boy, boy! The boy stopped pulling his sled and looked up at him suspiciously. What day is it?
Why, it's Christmas Day, sir.
Christmas Day? It's true. It's Christmas Day. The spirits did it all in one night. Ops can open at its usual hour.
He rushed to his desk, seized a thick brown paperweight, and returned to the window.
That's it, boy.
He cried and hurled the paperweight straight at him.
The spirits returned the following Christmas Eve.
Having had ample opportunity to practice, they performed their ghostly duties without misadventure. As a result of their intervention, Scrooge reformed his wicked ways and became good, kind-hearted, and a boon to whimpering little puppies everywhere.
But that's a story for another day. The end.
Thank you. Even better, the second time around, but I forgot to time it to make sure it was exactly five minutes. Are there any others that wish to address the board?
Wish.
Okay. Okay, please come forward.
Please step to the podium. Step to the podium.
Yes, to the podium and microphone. Thank you.
Please give us your name and address.
Okay, give your address. Okay, stay. I'm Roger Suggs of FBOE, French Benefit of Education, and I'm the outreach liaison for the program. We have just a student that wanted to speak to the board, so we'll allow him to speak. This is Tevin.
All right. How's everybody doing this morning?
We're well, thank you.
I read a little crust on my face. I just woke up. My name is Tevin Johnson. I don't live too far away from here. I live in 7411 Oakland Avenue, and I've been staying there for a while. I'm a student here at KC KCC. Been a student here for at least like two and a half years and plan on getting my degree in audio engineering. And I started the FBOE program about in 2012. And once I first came there, I knew from the jump that it was a program that would be beneficial to me towards where I wanted to be. At that time, when I first came to the program, I didn't know where I wanted to go. I just came because I heard that the program offered some good beneficial things for a student that was going there. So once I found out, you know, how the program is structured and everything that they offer, it really just led me on the right path more because of the information that they were given. They teach on things such as self-motivation, how to pump yourself up, and how to motivate yourself, and how to put you in a position to where you have the credentials and the talents and the skills to compete at what level that you're at. Not only just in a physical, using your hands, but also in a mentally wise. So I really liked that aspect about it. And also the different speakers that they have come up and the different events that they have you go to. This year, we had, went to a conference, I forgot the name of it.
Brothers Keepers.
My Brothers Keepers meeting. And that was real powerful. It was a bunch of young guys just coming together and talking about some issues that were in our society that's affecting us and how we can resolve those issues and keep moving forward in a positive direction. And I learned a lot from that. And they hooked us up with ties. I'm not really a tie person, you know.
Looks good.
Looks good on you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. But I really appreciate it there. Just, you see the whole image, you know, just being a successful type and looking at, you know, looking at professional way. So I really appreciate that about them too. But ever since I've been in the program, it's really been beneficial to me. I can't complain anything about it. I have great men surrounding me, great women in the program, and they offer good advice. And I have to say, if it wasn't for them, I wouldn't be here, sitting here right now. So, but another question that we talk about often, we've been talking about often in the program, is just environmental awareness. The whole Ferguson issue has been really a big topic in our discussion. And a couple of our mentors in the meeting have been aware and curious, asking like, what if that was to happen in KCK? What would KCK have to offer in order for that type of thing, in order for us to have a plan, to have a strategy to work on and to work from there so that we don't become a victim and our surroundings and our environment does not become that whole picture of how we are looked upon as men? Because that'd be a terrible thing. So I'd just like to know your guys' comments on that. What do you guys think would be the idea?
I'm not quite understanding what are you wanting us to respond to?
How?
Request or feelings?
The plan.
Yes.
Where it's come from is where a student asked, a group is, what would be the strategy to make sure that that don't happen in our community? What is the community plan for that? That was the question that was asked.
Are you talking about the broad community or the Kansas City-Kansas Community College Community?
The broad community.
The Kansas City-Kansas Community?
Yes.
Wind Dot County Community?
Yes.
I have something to say. Okay, number one, you young people have got to go to the ballot box. That's the number one issue. The number two issue is education. You have to find out all the facts and be mindful, have an open mind so that you'll be able to decipher the facts from all the friction. Number three, we need to band together. Trust is the number three, poverty is probably the number one, but I do know education is the only way out of poverty. And most of it extends from poverty. So therefore, education is going to be our only way out, especially for black men. You are already tainted. I hate to use the word tainted, but that's what it is. So you need to make sure that when something happens or before it happens, that you got a plan. And the strategy plan that you all come up with needs to be your plan, not our plan. So we definitely, I am willing to support you in helping you form that plan, but it's going to be what you want to do, not what Flunder want to do.
I also think that the plan is already set because they have places to go. They have things they can do here. They have the technical, the TEC where they can learn a trade. To me, poverty stands for not having the opportunity, being in a position to compete. You can break those plans and other people can see people that comes from nothing turn into something, and that's a gateway to bringing people there. And I think this college does offer that because you can come here and be in a program, be in other programs, that can get you connected to the plan you're talking about. But we want, they wanted to ask the board, so we said, here's the time to ask you whatever question you want because y'all have been willing to open the doors for different things, new pedagogies of teaching.
I agree with Ms. Flunder that it needs to come from you all, but that next step is for you to find ways to communicate that and for the community college to be a part of the community dialogue. That's, that's a role we should play. We, we're a diverse institution that reflects the community, and there are many ways that we could take the lead, including taking your cue from what you all have discussed and broaden that discussion to the community because that's, that's the next step.
Right.
And I thank you for doing that and for bringing that to us. Are there any other questions or?
I just applaud you for coming. I agree with the two previous comments. I just think that communication is an issue, and I'm not sure that we need to wait for you to do that. I'm not sure it needs to start with you. It seemed to me this was an entire community issue, and the entire community needs to be working on it. So I think you were starting the communication, starting the conversation, but it needs to go much broader than just this table. So thank you for coming.
I also applaud you for coming. I'll speak to it from the police perspective a little bit. I just think it's important for people to understand, and particularly young people to understand, that the police are the community, and the community are the police. The, the formal police agencies, whether it's the sheriff's office or whether it's the police department, are simply the people that have been designated to deal with some of the more difficult elements in society that regular citizens may not be, have all of the tools, training, or be effective in dealing with. So these conversations, these discussions are ongoing, and they have been ongoing. I feel that we're very fortunate in Kansas City, Kansas, and Wind Dot County because there has been a lot of work between the community and the police department working together for the last couple of decades here. There are regular, ongoing meetings. There are, there's interaction, conversation, discussion between the various leadership groups from the community with the, with the law enforcement agencies, and they work very closely together on everything. The most recent example is the hiring of the new police chief, where community members were invited in to serve on blue ribbon panels to help vet those candidates and make recommendations to the county administrator so that he could make his selection. So there are a lot of those conversations going on. They should never stop. I don't believe they ever will stop. And I agree with everything that everyone has said here, particularly that we can't wait till there's an incident and then try to do something. We've got to be way out in front of it. We are in this community, I believe. We need to, we need to stay there. And so there, there's several layers to this thing, kind of like an onion. And as you peel a layer back, you discover there's something else we need to be talking about. And as you peel another layer back, you say, oh, well, yeah, we better look at that and we better get out in front of that one too, and so on. And so, once again, I think the program is a great program. Obviously, you're here before us as great evidence of that. Mr. Suggs has been here a number of times, and we get regular reports, but I commend you for coming, and we welcome any of you to come at any time.
I just had one more comment about taking it even broader. There are some initiatives and some groups that are addressing this metrowide that cross those state and county boundaries that, you know, need to be crossed. And so I, once again, I think it'd be great for us to be part of those conversations to take it metrowide.
Yeah, that's, that's a conference that's going to be here March 28th that Tyrone Gardner is headed and extend from the Hundred Black Men in Ties when they had the panel discussion here. After that discussion, when he saw all the students asking the question, he decided to get with other community leaders and go a conference on his campus on the 28th.
Wonderful.
So that's where we can start with that plan.
Great.
More Squared is another one that, you know, is involved with these issues metrowide. So just, just a couple of other things to even take it more broadly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would, I would give, to what everyone has said at this, this point, but I'm a firm believer in voting. Voting is the big key to your success. So if you're going to get involved in the areas, that should be number one. If you can't register to vote and don't vote, count me out.
You agree?
Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much.
All right. Thank you.
Are there any others who wish to, please come forward?
Hi, I'm a returning student. My name is Kim Wagner, and I'm here just to present to the board a letter that I had delivered to Dr. Givens early December stating some needs of the InDesign program and the Mac Lab Center. And I know Dr. Givens has a history of being a great communicator and advocate to getting things done, so I just wanted to present the letter that was sent to her so that the board had a copy of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Anyone else? Okay, we will move on to communications. We bought, we've heard from the Theater at Christmas Carol.
Morning, Madam Chair. Dr. Givens, fellow trustees. George Brackovich, I'm the Economic Development Director with Unified Government. Appreciate the opportunity to appear before you this morning to talk a little bit about one of the incentive programs that we offer that requires your input and ultimately having an interlocal agreement that helps us administer this program. The acronym is NRA, although it has nothing to do, this program has nothing to do with rifles. Neighborhood Revitalization Act is the actual act that enables it. The policy itself is the program we administer. Give you a quick snapshot, well, let me, before I do that, I want to also introduce some fellow staff members that are here. Marlon Goff with Economic Development and Charles Brockman with Economic Development. And actually, Mr. Brockman is the staff person that actually administers this program for us. The basic premise of how this program works is we offer it as an incentive to residential, commercial, and some retail projects. And what it does is it grabs the existing base taxes and protects those base taxes. But any positive incremental change in those taxes can be rebated back to the project for a period of either five or 10 years. We have a special projects area that we've reserved for primarily retail projects, and I'm sure you're all familiar with the Wind Dot Plaza redevelopment. That was an incentive we offered to Red Legacy to come in, buy the old center and revamp it. Now I'm sure you've seen the new grocery store, the new Krispy Kreme donuts, and there's a Marshalls and a PetSmart under construction, and both, both of those have been announced. We're not, the last time we came before you, I don't think any of us were on staff to talk about the changes that were recommended in the policy at that time. I'll say those had, those changes had much more to do with kind of the meat and potatoes of the policy. Who, projects that the, the policy was going to go target and try to attract the community. Would say this year, this next plan that encompasses the next three years, the changes we're recommending are much more administrative in nature. We think the policy is functioning pretty well, but there's some tweaks we'd like to do to it. But there are items that you all should be very aware of. One other piece we want to present to you is some performance data based on when this policy started back in 2000. The original plan ran from 2000 to 2008, and the current policy we're under is kind of the third rendition of it. We wanted to show you performance, I guess specifically in regards to the amount of increase in appraised dollar value within the community college area. We also had those split out into separate school districts. Right now, USD 500 and 202 are the unified school districts that are participating. So again, thank you for a chance, the chance to give you a few opening remarks. At this time, I think I'll turn it over to Mr. Goff or Mr. Brockman, and they'll start on the presentation. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
See if this is working here. There we go. Okay, so we'll go through this and highlight a few things, one being the new taxes only allows refund on the new, not the base. And to pre-qualify, you must be current on your property taxes. Here's the eight changes that we're looking at. Specifically, I want to talk about commercial projects because you have a paper that was handed out and had residential on there. We're only doing commercial. No application fee for residential. And then another highlight, of course, is the proposed new Area 3 down on K-32. So the next slide here shows the existing NRA overlaid with the school districts. We have the existing Area 1, which is the 10-year rebate, and existing Area 2, East and West, which is the five-year rebate, and Turner is involved with that. As you look to the east of USD District 204, you see the proposed Area 3, which is what we're calling the K-32 corridor. It's mainly business, commercial. And there's a detail for the area. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Marlon Goff, and he's going to look at some program performances that he will share with you.
Will he be answering why the need? Will he be answering why the need for the proposed Area 3? Why expand this? Just keep it where it was previous?
Right. So, if you look at where Proposed Area 3 is situated geographically, you know, this map is both a map of the county, and then, as Charles referenced, we have the three project areas, 1, 2, and 2 East and 2 West, but essentially also the overlay of the four independent school districts. Area 3 was represented as a gap. Along that corridor, and this is a more detailed version, you have K-32, and then to the west it intersects with Interstate 435. You know, we've recognized over the previous three years that there's a corridor with some commercial activity there, and so, this particular area didn't have representative, you know, you couldn't access this particular incentive tool. And so, we feel like this proposed area, and it's actually within the boundaries of the Bonner Springs School District, so we'll be making this presentation to them as well. But essentially, it'll allow for the businesses, the commercially zoned areas in that particular corridor, the opportunity to take a look at this incentive tool as a way to incentivize more commercial development, job creation, those. Do you have anything to add to that? I know Charles went and toured the area, got some really good photographs, just to kind of familiarize ourselves with that corridor and see, you can kind of see maybe the aging infrastructure or the general conditions of the structures that are there. And so, you know, that's what this particular tool is really good about, is, you know, giving those property owners or developers incentives to reinvest in their properties, and hopefully maybe even attract more. Okay. So, in this slide, what we wanted to capture was essentially the project activity that we've been tracking, you know, over the first 10 to 14 years of the program. And so, you see, Area 1, that's the 10-year term area, you know, just under 500 projects. Combined with Area 1 and 2, we only have eight projects or applications that were denied, you know. So, we're well over 500 projects in total, but of that number, only eight didn't meet the criteria. And an example of why a project or application may not be approved, maybe the scale or the scope of what's contemplated in the project doesn't rise to where it's going to actually trigger that critical threshold to generate an incentive with which we can rebate, you know. So, that's just an example. The pending, that could simply mean that the project is still in progress, you know. I think in particular, this one might reference a condominium project, where the individual units are each plotted separately, and so, there's essentially 89 applications. Well, that doesn't all get done at once, and so, once the work is completed, then the term will start, and so, that's what that number represents. So, this is more of an aggregate summary of the previous slide, where we see the project activity, but we also broke down the years would represent when we've made changes to the plan. So, in Area 1, I think that bar, particularly with new residential, you know, that's probably indicative of the market conditions that we saw in the early part of the 2000s, you know. Really strong residential and commercial new construction, you know, commonly referenced as that housing boom. But then, when we look at 2009 to 2011, that's probably more of the market's response. And so, and then finally, over the previous three years, we think this bar graph is representative of some of the specific changes that we proposed last time around, and particularly with the commercial new construction. You know, before, again, talking about gaps, we had, you know, one of our other incentive tools that's really popular with manufacturing and commercial investment, large-scale projects is industrial revenue bonds. But, you know, that tool really doesn't start to make sense until the project investment rises above the $3 million threshold, primarily because of the cost of issuance, fees, and so, by the time you get through all those, the actual bond proceeds really wouldn't justify going that route. But previously, you know, our NRA was capped at a level that didn't allow that scale of project, you know, any real incentive either. And so, I think what we see here is, once we made that adjustment in our policy to allow NRA projects that rise up to $3 million to take advantage of this tool, you know, we see that trend from 2009 to 2011, that we were less than $2 million, less than $1 million. Now, we're up to $3 million, and so, we think that's, you know, indicative of how the commercial sector has responded to that particular tool. Okay, and I have just a couple more slides, again, a little bit more detail and breakdown of the previous policy from 2012 to 2014. You know, again, Area 1, that's the 10-year project area, you know, it just kind of gives a breakdown of what those particular projects entail, whether they were rehab, commercial, new construction. But you can also see, we further flesh out what that increase in the praise and assessed value represented for the taxing jurisdictions as well. So, that's the good thing about, you know, we postponed our collection of new assessed values to incentivize the investment, but essentially, that's the investment that we make as the taxing incentive. It doesn't require any upfront out-of-pocket costs. The valuations go up, which then increases, you know, the base valuation total, and then it also delivers that incentive for the property owner or developer. And again, Area 2, again, the Area 2's are a 5-year, and we also, we have those further fleshed out to show the two independent school districts, 202 and 500, and the breakdown represented in Project Area 2. And again, just some more detailed breakdowns, probably represented in some of the previous slides, but again, it shows the average annual increase. So, we're at a little over $2 million of annual incremental increase for new residential development, for an example. And we'll turn this back over to Charles, because he actually has some really good examples of projects, how they looked before, and then the post-construction, and so, with that, I'll transition back to Charles, and then afterwards, we have time for questions.
Marlin's exactly right. You know, using the NRA as an incentive really enhances the area. So, here's an example of a boarded-up home on 1149 Grandview, and the top-left picture is what it is after it was completed. Here is two other homes, 519 Barnett and 2258 Quindero. Those are brand-new homes as well, before empty lots, now generating a tax base. This is a commercial rehab old gas station on West 43rd Street. Auto mechanics shot, ready to go. The NRA, commercial rehabilitation incentive was used, and now it's a thriving architectural firm. So, these are some of the examples that we can throw out without, you know, overloading you, that gives exactly what we were talking about today during the program, as earlier Marlin shared. So, at this time, we're open for questions about the program that we presented today.
Could you speak to number seven?
On this handout, Ray?
Yes, on the handout that gave us.
Removal of prevailing wage option.
The removal of the prevailing wage option is, the state has removed it last year in July, I believe it was. So, our policy has to follow that, you know, dictating that policy. So, we're taking that out, using the prevailing wage, because there's no law we're needing. We have also taken it out of other incentive programs, so we're just following suit.
You mean, if you use HUD's money, you still can do this?
I'm sorry?
We're not using HUD, you're not using HUD's money, so you can take the prevailing wage out?
It depends. So, what the state did is, the state removed local government's ability to say, hey, we'll offer additional incentive if you use prevailing wage. It doesn't affect any federally funded programs. So, the NRA, as a standalone, is a locally administered policy, so we did have to remove that as one of the provisions because of the state's mandate.
Thank you.
Okay. One of the other things, is the $1.68 million, how did it end up that it was both for residential and commercial in the increase? How did that same amount end up in both of them, Joe?
We close our presentation, let me, I'll just go back to our hand-printed slide. I think I know which question you're referencing. Okay. So, this is under the 2012 to 2014 plan. Okay, so those highlights, so when we look at the average annual increase in appraised value for residential and commercial rehab, both $1.68 million. Yeah, and this data is generated directly from our county appraisers office.
Okay. That's not a good answer, though.
Well, I'd like to give a better.
I cannot believe that the commercial and the residential would come out the exact same amount of money. That just hardened me bleeding.
Well, what I'm hearing him say is that these figures aren't from their department, it is from the appraisers' office, is that correct?
Yes.
Well, I mean, so...
I mean, it's rounded up as well.
So, we need to, we would need to direct that question to that office, not here. So, that's...
They didn't want to make the presentation.
I don't know if you could answer this question, I'm just, is there any way you can tell us the economic impact on the college for this policy?
The way we calculate it is, you know, so, if you take the assessed, the assessed value of assessed increment of any given, you know, project, and you apply that, you know, apply your mill levy, so whatever mill levy, you know, the community college's portion of a property owner's tax bill is, and divide that value by $1,000, and you can specifically know per project what impact will be generated or affected, you know, from the community college. What we do know is, the base, you know, is what will always be consistent, you know. So, in any given year, when the project is approved and comes online, the base for that year is captured, so the mill levy, the assessed and appraised value is captured. It's just the increase, if there's an increase, is what's rebated to the property owner for a period of time dictated by the project areas, 95% of that increase.
Yeah, that's my question. What impact does that loss of revenue from a college had on the improvements or rehabs?
Well, it's something that's assessing, on a per-project basis. I think some of these numbers captured, you know, will actually show, so let's just say, we saw an increase for residential rehab, you know, during, in Area 1, which is 10-year area, 43 projects, we saw an assessed value increase of just over $500,000 in that three-year period, right? And so, what I'm saying is, you know, to get to that further detail, I mean, certainly we could flush that out, but essentially, it's a formula that we simply would apply to that.
I understand. I just think that's important information for the organization like school districts and colleges that are pretty dependent upon, none of us are rich right now, and trying to figure out how we're going to continue to meet our budgets, and I think it's just important that college understands what this means for revenue.
You know, I think one of the things too, you know, I mean, it's a great question, is trying to calculate, you know, which areas would probably, without any incentive, still attract or generate redevelopment. You know, I think a great example in the before and after slides that Charles shows is, you know, we have certain areas of the community that, I mean, really have seen no or minimal reinvestment over decades or more. We show a vacant lot that's probably in our land bank inventory, not generating any, hardly any tax revenue. You know, with this incentive, you know, yeah, we're postponing the collection of that tax revenue, but I think the thing, I get the critical question is to figure out, would that investment have eventually occurred without this tool?
Yeah, I think what, bottom line is...
That's constantly trying to evaluate.
The college is investing in the growth of the community down the road somewhere. I mean, somewhere where this is over, we'll have those taxes, but right now, we're using this rebate or whatever, our loss of revenue, to invest in the community, and I think that's an important point to make.
It is.
Well, what you have is conflicting interests. On the one hand, the reinvestment in the community, as you say, something that maybe isn't bringing about anything on the tax base, is developed, so then there's something down the road. Unfortunately, what the state of Kansas has done to education is that, you know, we don't want to fund you. We certainly aren't funding you adequately, and so, your community has to do it. And when, so then, when we go to look at our budget, and we want to invest in our students, who are our community, well, there's your conflict, because instead of being able to say, oh, hey, this great new development, we got some tax dollars coming, well, in five or 10 years, but we needed them yesterday, not five and 10 years from now. So, then we have to go to the taxpayer and say, well, but to reinvest in our education to end the cycle of poverty, well, we're going to have to raise the mill, which is going to raise your taxes. And so, then they're conflicted, because they say, well, on the one hand, we got all this development going, and they feel like the rich people are the ones that are getting the break, and then our hard-working community members are seeing their taxes go up, so that, you see what I, so there is an inherent conflict. It isn't about right or wrong. It is, in fact, the cost of investing on the one hand, what's it do to the other hand? And we're getting no assistance from the state, you see, and that's what's making this more complex. And I just think that that story needs to be clear to our citizens, as we as a board try to invest in the educational process, while, of course, the unified government is going to be wanting to invest in the revitalization of our community, understanding that in the short term, there could be some taxing anxiety, I guess I'll call it.
You know, and I know you, no comment is necessary on that, other than, as a local municipality, we totally, 100% understand where you're coming from.
You feel the pain.
We feel the pain. The one thing I wanted to mention, though, about NRA specifically, is really the broad requirement of the program is, it just requires a 15% change in assessed value. So, we're definitely seeing this as an urban redevelopment tool. If you buy a $20,000, $30,000 house, and that's an opportunity for a first-time homebuyer, and whether it's an owner-occupant that buys the home and makes the improvement, or that it's an investor that comes in, our focus has been that we're willing to leverage that tax dollar for the stabilization of the community, and we're, you know, the few examples we brought today, we really see that that's working. And, but you're absolutely right.
Well, I agree. But I guess, for me, I'm not speaking for the rest of my fellow trustees, but I get tired at every, annually, the unified government will say what the educational taxing entities are doing, and then what they're doing, and frankly, they pit us against each other, because they say, well, see, it's education that's raising your taxes, not us. Well, but what you're asking for us to do right now is to sacrifice our tax base for the betterment of the community, but that's not in a footnote underneath your criticism of that we are the largest entity in the taxing. And so, the unified government speaks out of both sides its mouth, and I do not appreciate that, as a trustee or as a community member, because it does not divulge the entire story. But for me to say, oh, now I'm not, you know, perhaps not vote for this, and he's, oh, he's against revitalizing? and he's, oh, he's against revitalizing our community, well, that would be bunk. But I am also very dedicated to education, and I believe that's why I was elected to the, this board, was, is to safeguard the integrity of our educational system and to ensure that it is the best that it can be to end the cycle of poverty for so many of our residents. And I believe, and I think, I've actually heard the UG say, that education is the tool to really revitalizing our community. And so that's all I'm wanting, is that there is a clear picture of this, and not just to give us a slice here and a slice there, and then leave it up to somebody else to try to put the pieces together. I think that that full picture needs to be developed so it's very clear as to what is being asked and what is being done, is all, all that I am requesting.
Are you needing a vote on this today from the board?
I don't believe so. I, I think the, the next step would be to give you a draft inter-local agreement, and, and at some point, you'll need to take action on that. But back to Mr. Rios, I, I think we can ask our treasurer's office to, to deliver a report because every year, they, they, you know, have to treat those NRA rebate funds a little differently. And I think it's a, a more than appropriate request to say, we'd like to see that reporting. And, and so we'll go back and work with the treasurer's office to try to deliver that, I'm assuming either to Dr. Givens or back to the board, and it can be discussed.
I, I support the, the program, but I think it's just part of the due diligence of this board to realize the economic impact on our college, so would certainly appreciate you doing exactly what you said you were going to do with your proposal, so appreciate that. Thank you.
While you're at it, George, do another favor. And whoever y'all's phone message when you call City Hall, have them to quit saying that the school district is, has taxes. That's, and that's why they taxes are so high. Because I get that every week.
I didn't realize they were, they were saying that, so.
Okay, so if we could change that phone message, we wouldn't look like the bad guys all the time. And I usually don't agree with everything that Rio says, but he's right on target.
That is one of the messages we'll definitely take back. So thank you for making that clear. We got the message. But back to Dr. Daniels, I think you asked about, our backstop is, is February because really what we need to do is get all of these inter-local agreements in place, get the unified Board of Commissioners to approve it, and then we actually have to send it off to the state attorney general to have a final approval on all of those agreements. And so that's kind of, our backstop is, is getting all of that pushed out to the AG in February.
So you can.
Do you have an exact date or just early February, late?
So we can, you perhaps could bring us a report in January, if that possible.
We can. Yeah, I mean, we could deliver it in advance of that, but we could come back and if you have stand for some questions again.
That'd be great. Thank you very much.
Yes. Anything else?
Yes. On number two, you might want to change that, that word. Some people would, tongue-in-cheek would say that's probably the right word, but I think desecration is just a mistake. It should be discretion.
I wasn't going to bring that up.
Discretion.
Very observant, yes.
The word is desecration, should be discretion.
Economic Development Staff has the desecration on all NRA topics. Just set the base.
I apologize. Our copy doesn't even have that word, and either word, actually. And it's, oh, it's in the memo. Okay.
Yeah.
Number two.
Definitely a typo. Change the phone message. Fix the typo. Got it?
No more desecration.
No more desecration.
All right. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time. We appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, George and all. Thank you.
Sure, we may have their morning.
Good luck at Bonner School.
Now, we're moving to the resolution for a smoke-free campus, which I will read in its entirety. Whereas, the Board of Trustees of Kansas City Kansas Community College believe that tobacco use, hereafter also referring to electronic cigarettes of any kind, and tobacco smoke exposure is detrimental to the health of all in our community who attend, work, or visit our campus, and can be offensive to those attending our facilities. And whereas, the college believes that a completely tobacco-free public institution can only have a positive effect on lifestyle choices, institutional productivity, health insurance costs, and whereas cigarettes, once consumed in outside spaces, are sometimes discarded on the ground, requiring additional maintenance time and expense, and receptacles and smoking stalls diminish the beauty and image of the college. And whereas, the Board of Trustees determines that the prohibition of tobacco use at the college serves to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Therefore, be it resolved that tobacco use and the use of electronic cigarettes is prohibited on all Kansas City Kansas Community College properties. No person shall use any form of tobacco at or on any campus-operated outdoor area, including restrooms, spectator, and concession areas. These facilities include all walking trails, sidewalks, and athletic facilities, with exception of only the balconies of student housing, as currently allowed, adopted this ninth day of December 2014 by the Board of Trustees of Kansas City Kansas Community College in the county of Wyandotte, State of Kansas.
Move approval of the resolution.
I have a, at least one question. I think we need a date for this. If I'm not mistaken, if the board approves this today, and the way it's written right now, it would seem to go into effect right now. And I don't think that's the intent, because we need time to inform the staff, inform the students, inform the community of this. And I think there's a policy being written that will address this also, that the board will approve. So am I reading that right, Mr. Nguyen? It seems to me like that there needs to be an effective date as to when this will go into effect, not today.
Yes, Trustee Daniels, you are correct. And I've been asked by Dr. Givens to develop a policy for the board to consider with an effective date, I believe, of July 1. Am I correct, Dr. Givens?
We would, it, it's either July 1 or August 1. By the time school starts, we haven't settled on that date, but either date would work. But by the time school starts in the fall, this would be in effect.
And Trustee Daniels, the other thing that I was asked to do is, is figure out a way, how we get proper notice and, and the other things, so that, consistent with what you've done in the past, when you implement a policy, it allows for a transition so that people can modify and change their behavior so that you're not distracted with policing here a, a policy that you've adopted. And my, and instructions have been to follow what you've done in the past, and you've usually, as you've indicated, given a period of notice, an explanation, and educated the individuals that are going to be affected as to why and the rationale behind it. And then from there, it's particularly important here because it applies to outsiders, people who may never be on the college except to attend a game and some other things. And so one of the things that Dr. Givens asked me to do is make sure that the policy addresses individuals who may be strangers to the campus, and in a way, and sort of indicates to them what is necessary to continue to be on or near the college campus. Another thing I was asked to do is take a look at the exception you've made for the residential facility, and, and all of those things we will do, but within the process that you've set up before, which is where you invite feedback. But once you adopt the resolution, it's adopted, the effective date, I believe, Dr. Givens, okay, August 1, and that allows you eight, nine months to allow people to prepare for that and to educate, which is what you've done before, if you recall, when you had your drug testing program, same protocol that you followed then, and you had some of the same questions and concerns. So my thought is that you would follow that.
So would language effective on a date to be determined by the administration fit? Or would you want to go with, and just go ahead and say August 1?
We can go ahead and say August 1.
Okay, so I, I move, amend the, the resolution to make it effective August 1, 2015.
I'll second that.
I have a question. The policy that we, the last policy that Ray and I worked on for the cigarettes, how closely is that to that policy?
Well, it, it's similar, but, but, but not that close at all, because what you then, what you did then is you were coming along a state statute which said that within so many feet, and so you still allowed it, and your policy committee spent some time doing that. What you're saying now is that this is a prohibition, so it's within zero feet, and, and that's really what you're going to have to, to manage and make sure that the language is clear.
Okay, so do the policy committee need to meet? Did I hear you say you were going to do it?
What, what, what I understood I would do would be draft some terms for consideration, and in the end, the board's going to have to take it up. And, and so if you wanted to go to your policy committee first, that's fine, but my instructions were to give you something to work with so that you're not being asked to draft this policy from, from scratch. And so however you want to do it, Trustee Flunder, is fine. And, and I, I might add two things while I had the floor. You still need a second. And then the other thing is, when you talk about the amendment, my thought is, is therefore be it resolved that effective 2000, August 1, 2015, comma, the tobacco use and the use of electronic tobacco devices will be prohibited in the therefore clause.
I think Mr. Rios did second.
I seconded.
I'm sorry. There's a motion on the floor.
Yeah, there is a motion on the floor.
Can, can they chew tobacco?
No. That's not to answer the question.
Could we vote on a motion?
They ain't smoking it.
Are there, is there any further discussion?
Well, first, we're just, we have to vote on the amendment.
Correct. Adding the date.
Adding the date.
Well, I was just asking if there was any further discussion.
On that issue.
Before we actually, well, we have, we have moved, moved and seconded, so.
Can I say something?
About the motion.
Please.
But that can only be about the motion.
Yeah, this is only about the amendment right now.
About the, about the date.
Just add the date to it.
Yeah.
So then we could talk about.
Then we talk about the whole thing after the vote.
Okay, so I'm going to call for a vote on the amendment reflecting the new effective date. Correct. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now, now do I hear a motion to accept the amendment?
Well, I have a, I have a question, or did you have another question?
No, I think Mr. Ashen already made a motion to accept it.
Do we have, oh, okay, do we have a second on that?
As amended, I think.
I think you have a second on the amendment to the effective date, therefore be it resolved that effective, like, you're not going to have to use. And so now, you're ready to have a discussion on the resolution as amended, and then when you're done with that, you can, at your discretion, take action. And, and so I.
I did have a question. I have a question.
Yeah, okay, but we did have a second on that, that motion. Okay.
I don't think we did.
Yeah, I don't think we did.
We do not have a second, but two, two questions, and maybe Attorney Nguyen, you alluded to this in, in your remarks. I, I'm curious about the exception at the residence hall, kind of going counter to what the whole purpose of this is, and looking out for the health, safety, and welfare of the community. And secondly, I, because there's always an inherent danger when you start naming off facilities, I see parking lots are not, and I recall our board discussion very specifically was about parking lots, whether we would allow smoking in the vehicles, and that, I don't know whether there's any resolution to it, but it was, again, about, well, where are they going to put their cigarette butts? Are they going to put them on the parking lot, and that, so we're still going to have the maintenance costs and stuff? So again, is it going counter to what we're saying in, in the resolution? I don't know if, how you can answer those, but I'm, I'm curious as to the thought process.
My answer is maybe not, because part of what you're doing is announcing that you're a tobacco-free campus. One of the things that will be in the policy is a discussion of the consequences for violation. And, and that's something that the board is going to have to, to take up. Once you declare that you're tobacco-free, what are the consequences for those that violate your policy? And, and my, my initial reaction is that as you begin, less is more, because you're, you're changing a culture and you're providing an announcement, and it's not too far different than what you've done when you've had other prohibitions, because you don't want to increase the policing phase of what you do. What you want to do is increase, as I understand from talking with Dr. Givens, the healthy aspect of your campus. And so my thought was that, and Dr. Givens, correct me if I'm wrong, education and the benefit that would be derived from those who are participating, for lack of a better word, in the prohibition would be enough to where you wouldn't have to have the cigarette police. And, and you can do both, Trustee Rios, but my thought is, the board's going to have to provide some direction in that regard, but have the policy first, and then your policy will help dictate how rigid or flexible you want to be on this, because this could take up a lot of time, because you're, you wouldn't be the first to try to stamp out smoking, but you can't say on this campus, it is restricted, severely restricted. So if you have someone smoking in their car, are you going to knock on the window and say, you can't do that? And if so, what would be the consequence? My thought is that both of those answers would be no, but you could talk about that once you see the policies and, and the procedures, because that's where you are now. You've just declared a broader intent.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Nguyen. It seems to me like we passed this as a, our intent, and then the details will be in that policy that Mr. Nguyen is to bring. That's, that's what we're really have to dig into, some pretty specific things about what this, what this resolution actually means when we put it into place on the campus.
Any further discussion?
I'd like to, I would like to respond to Mrs. Flunders' question about chewing tobacco. One of the, we are with this policy, supporting the Kansas Athletic Association, because student athletes are, are thrown out of the games and moved from, removed from the facility for having it even in their bags. So this is in support of that, chewing tobacco, too.
Thank you, Givens.
I move approval of the resolution as amended.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. College Senate President Darren Elliott.
Good morning.
Thank you for your time today. In September, I was elected the Chair of the College Senate, and when my colleagues asked me if I'd be willing to take on this role, I thought about it for a long time, having been on the College Senate for a decade, and what the College Senate has done in the past few years and what I would like to see it become. And so I said that I would take on that role under two conditions. First was that they would support me in my hope of changing the dynamics of College Senate, and that second, they would support me in working with the college president to help change the culture of both the Senate and the college community. Since that time, I've met with Dr. Givens on a regular basis, and regards to College Senate, and I wanted to let you know about some of the progress we've made and what we're looking to do going forward. College Senate, first of all, sent you the tobacco resolution that you just discussed, and that was two years in the making. That has languished in the College Senate process for two years, with feedback from community, students, staff, faculty, so it was great to see something move forward, to get acted upon, and so that's good news, number one. We also added co-chairs of the strategic plan, Dr. McDowell and Dr. Men, as ad hoc members to the College Senate, and they'll start rotating next semester, coming to the meetings, to work with the College Senate on the strategic plan for the college. Dr. Givens and Jim Beechwood coordinated with us in our November meeting to have Trizolo Communications come and speak to the College Senate. We had a great meeting with them. We spent an hour going over workshop ideas and things they could do to help with the marketing of the college. In the role as Chair, I've asked the College Senate this year to focus on the strategic plan with emphasis on communications. I'm serving on the committee that's chaired by Barbara Clark Evans, that's responsible for communications in terms of the strategic plan, and more specifically, we've recently been given the opportunity to take the campus climate survey, which you've all received by now, and I'm sure have read every single word of, and understand. Dr. Daniels pointed out at the last College Senate meeting that the board was very much in tune with the climate survey, and was very concerned about the results of the climate survey and what we do going forward. And so we've taken that on. At the last meeting, Barbara came and talked for about 45 minutes about what the committee wants to do and how we want to look at communications. I wanted to let you know that my. I wanted to let you know that my goal as College Senate Chair is to help make strides to improve the areas identified in that report that have either, over the last few years, remained stagnant or have actually decreased, particularly communications, morale for the college staff, and the campus being a place where people are happy to come to work. And if you look at the numbers over the last few years, those are three areas that have stayed the same or they go down a little bit. And so the question is, why? When we met with the president, we talked about the vision of both the president and the college. We've talked about working with the president and developing a communications plan for the college, which would be a first for the college and somewhat unprecedented in the working relationship between the faculty, staff, and the president. One of the things we're looking at for next semester is conducting focus groups with campus members to find out what they mean when they answer that survey that says communication. And we talk about this every May, that the board has met with the College Senate. That's an issue that always comes up. Well, we need to communicate better, we need to communicate more, but what does that mean? When I talked to Dr. Givens, I kind of went back to my roots in my communications degree. And when I talk about it in classes, we ask people, when you define communication, what does that mean for you? And what we're really talking about is defining a shared meaning. That is, what do we mean when we say X? And that's the best way to communicate. And so in order to increase that communication, we need to find out from people. What do they mean when they say morale? What do they mean when they say communication? And so we're gonna help people or ask people to define those and share their meaning with us. We also talked about looking at the decisions we make with the backdrop always being, what is this decision doing to help people succeed? And so when we take on decisions and when we get into disagreements and when we have moments in our meetings where we may not agree with each other, the bottom line is the outcome of that being, what is it we're doing to help people succeed, primarily our students? And in the last meeting, the students were very vocal about some of these issues and things that they will be helping us with and getting involved with. And so the motto, kind of what can I do to help you succeed, is a backdrop for that conversation. And then finally, and I talked about this with Trizolo when they were here, one of my biggest concerns was, to me, really, the college has three main areas to focus on. One is growing the college. One is providing students with an opportunity that they may not otherwise have. And then the third is, the college helping improve the image of Wyandotte County. And that seems to be a big part of the role we're supposed to be playing. And so in this process of communication building and team building and morale, the goal is that the faculty, the staff, the administration, the students will come together in a way that'll help that communication process, but also help both the image of the college and the college helping the image of the county. You will probably be hearing from me more second semester after we've had a chance to do some of these projects, to do some of these focus groups. But I think it's a great opportunity to change the dynamic of the College Senate, to make it a more functional body, to make it a more dynamic body, and that when we meet with you in May, the tone of the conversation is a lot different than what it has maybe been in the past. And not that that conversation hasn't been valuable, but a conversation that really looks at kind of what we've done as opposed to all of our failures, and then not only what we've done, but what we can do going forward, I think, will put the college in a better place to both serve its mission, the community, and the strategic plan. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have of me now. Otherwise, you will hear from me more second semester.
Thank you, Darren. Any questions?
I'll just make a comment as a representative from the board on the College Senate. I appreciate the focus that Darren has brought to the Senate. Sometimes in the past, I thought they kind of watered in the weeds a little bit. And Darren has tried to focus on the strategic plan and communication, and I think it's going to pay off and the Senate being more focused and coming up with some positive actions or programs we can put in place to make the college even better than it is right now. So I appreciate Darren taking the job as President. I think he's gonna do a good job.
Thank you.
I'm glad to hear that you, the College Senate, spent time with Trizolo. And I'm anxious to see that report, which I think is going to be presented today, but I'm not sure that's gonna happen. But I would assume, you know, that the College Senate and the communications plan will certainly be integrated into that, into Trizolo's plan. So I look forward to seeing that.
It was a great conversation with them. I think we were all appreciative of the opportunity to meet with them, and that was Dr. Givens' idea. So having them come to us and kind of, especially since that body is representative of all of the campus community, I think it was important for them to get a perspective from all of those different constituents. Anybody else?
Anything else?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Darren. Oh, okay. Turn this over to Dr. Givens for some announcements.
I just have two. Finals begin tomorrow. As also will be happening on campus tomorrow is our annual holiday celebration. The president's reception is the combination, the president's reception and the faculty and staff associations, holiday gatherings. We combined all of that into one. And so again, this year, I think it's the third year that we've done so. We will be celebrating tomorrow between the hours of 11:00 and 2:00, and it will be right here in Upper Jewel in this area.
So anything else?
Are we going to move to the executive session now? Or, oh, okay, all right. We will be going into executive session to discuss not-elected personnel matters, to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed. Are we also doing consultation on matter protected by attorney-client privilege?
How long?
Ms. Brayden Thunk, can I add? You know, we have Mr. Miller here on the audit.
That's why I wondered if he's in it.
So he could be part of the session.
Oh, okay.
Fine, thank you.
All right.
And so that we're clear, he'll be in the session, really on both for Matt and for reasons that'll become more evident when we get there. But you'll be meeting with me to discuss matters which, and have communication which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. And Mr. Miller will play a small part in that as well.
Okay.
For how long, Counselor?
It's our time.
Twenty minutes, maybe, twenty-five minutes with the bathroom break.
Twenty-five minutes, okay. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we are back in session and ready for the Vice President for Academic Affairs report.
Okay, sorry, let me get into my board effect. I was distracted by the college attorney, I'm sorry.
Well, and I was distracted. I don't think we approved the President's report, is what I understand.
Move exceptions at the President's report.
Your second.
Second.
Oh, thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Now, we're ready for your report, Michael.
Okay, my thing just went blank on me. Oh, boy. Anyway, I have my report in front of you. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer any that you might have at this time. I'm not sure.
There are no questions. I move approval of the Vice President's report. Just, I do want to ask about the Harvester's project.
About the what?
The Harvester's, I'm calling it the Harvester's project. Trustee Ash asked that we assist the community church.
Yes.
And we're gonna use the TEC parking lot.
It went extremely well.
And what's the future?
It went extremely well. It's on board to occur again this Saturday. In fact, Chief Snyder was sharing with me, the head guy from Harvester's is gonna be out, meet with him again tomorrow. Greg's staff was outstanding. Andrica and/or whomever else from the college that had a number of student volunteers down there, they did an outstanding job. And the event went off as we anticipated that it would. So we're looking for similar results tomorrow.
Could you have an estimate of the turnout?
No, not tomorrow, this Saturday.
Do you have an estimate of the turnout?
And then the following Saturday.
There was over 500 families and 500 cars that were down there on the first day that we hosted. They actually had to turn away, I would say, at least 30 carloads or 30 cars of people because they ran out of food.
Ran out of food.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
But as far as any of the issues that were going on before, you know, traffic issues, blocking roadways.
None.
We would accommodate all that in the parking lot. So we didn't have any of the secondary issues from the other location.
No interference really with anything else that was occurring in the building that day as well. Very few users early that Saturday morning, and they were able to get in and out without any difficulty.
Great.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
The motion to accept the Vice President's report.
Is there a second?
We already had a motion.
I think Ray motioned and J.D. seconded, so.
Okay, all right. No further discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Dr. Susan Lindell's report.
Okay, thank you. And before I start my report, I'd just like to recognize Chief Snyder. I know Dr. Givens and I both have expressed our appreciation for the work over the Thanksgiving break and the upcoming holiday break. And Chief Snyder and his team are here protecting the property. Dr. Givens says our greatest assets are the individuals who go home at the end of the day. And Chief Snyder and his staff come back again, and we appreciate that so much. It's something we fund, and we're proud to fund it, and we thank you for that. So it kind of falls under finance and under our discussion. Thank you. So you can see on page 40, that starts our report. The report will include a few things, a few items, that we are starting to change and update. And what we're doing is just continuing to review for best practices and update some of our processes and procedures. So we would like to draw your attention to those under best practices implementation. We do have, at this point in time, a transfer of funds approval form that Dr. Vitale and I have, and we will be talking to budget administrators about that. We want to be certain that the funds under the approved budget that are transferred, that we do have a record of that, so that we're able to ascertain. We met with the deans to discuss. We could ascertain the cost of delivery for programs and how effective we are in that. And so just wanted to draw your attention to that. The rest of the business report, we do have one item, and that is at your place here at the board table, and then also we'll include it in the minutes, that will replace page 56. And for that, again, toward that end of better and more transparent analysis, we're looking at the capital leases that we have, whether they're space or equipment. And we updated that to include the two dates for those, the Leavenworth date being 7/31/2018, and the English as a second language, the baseline West State Plaza being 9/30/2016. So again, just continuing to refine and implement those reports and disseminate those and get feedback on them. The second thing would be to ask you for approval of the audit as presented at the November 11, 2014, meeting, the Board of Trustees. And so that would be the recommendation of the administration to accept the audit as presented.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The second thing that we have then on the agenda is the payment of bills. And the bills, the dispersment is $2,862.138. And we would, the payment of those bills, and they're in the report. If anyone has any questions about that, would be happy to answer them. Otherwise, we would like to move.
Move approval of payment of the bills?
Aye.
It's been moved and seconded on the payment of the bills. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
To that extent, on page 44, the date is noted, month of October 2014, and that should be November of 2014. So for the trustees, page 44 of the report, it should read November instead of October.
Under the recommendation.
Under the recommendation.
Yeah, my apologies.
Oh, under the recommendation, I see.
Yeah, my apologies for that.
Just so you're cognizant.
Yeah, she will correct that. Then the financial report, the next nine items are items that we move for approval. As we go through those, if you have questions about them, let us know. The majority, many of those are for Perkins funding, which certainly Dr. Vitale can address. The additional police cars for one that, for campus police, one that we've had to replace that will either go to the tech center for use there, for parts and so forth, or it will be removed from campus and from our inventory, and they're replaced with a vehicle that will be operating for the unit. Also, I think there were questions, too, perhaps, about Kupersky. And that is truly, again, for the safety and security and of the information technology system. Virus protection there. Any other questions on items 1 through 9?
Move approval of items 1 through 9.
The only question I had was, when do we require bids on some of these? I'm trying to remember what our policy is on that. And I know some are specific, they can only buy them from, but I was thinking like number eight for the forklift is, is that one we would normally bid out, or what was the?
On those, we normally would bid out. We try to get three bids. In some instances, say with patrol car and with the forklift, I would have to ask on that particular item what the bids were. But we do require three bids unless it's a preferred vendor. In the case of the patrol car, we were able to get that through, through the, it was a retired vehicle, as I understand it, through the Kansas Highway Patrol. Is that correct? Yes. And then the forklift?
I believe on the forklift, Donna had bought that, and Rich and Donna had accepted bids for, there was different used ones.
But there were bids, there was a bid on it.
Yeah, three bids, three bids. I just don't have them here, but we do require the three bids, yeah.
Based on the hours that they had and similar.
Yeah. And then with the police vehicle, there were not bids in that instance. And then also with the item for information technology, that would have been a renewal, I believe, of a three-year lease. So there was, you know, not a bid on that, that.
Bass is shaking his head, so that's confirmation.
Thank you.
Just for the trustees, we are, in the future, there'll be a little more explanation. The committee has requested that a little explanation be accompanied, so deans in the audience just be cognizant. It doesn't need to be a dissertation, but just, for example, the lowest of the bids were, you know, so there's this clarity on what we are approving.
I think it's helpful also for the public that there's some mention of the fact that there were bids taken.
Absolutely.
So that they understand we're not just buying stuff willingly.
Yeah.
Right, thank you.
Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded to approve items 1 through 9. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'd like to present the December 2014 Human Resources Report. Items 1 through 6, I'm presenting for your information. With the change on number 2, should be early retirement instead of resignation. And then items 7 through 20, I'd like to present for your approval, like to recommend for your approval.
Move approval of the recommendations from Human Resources.
Aye.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
I think this is your last board meeting.
Yes, it is.
In the charge of Human Resources, so I certainly want to extend gratitude for your service and the professional manner in which you have presented sometimes, you know, some things that we don't always like to hear, but need to hear. You know, we need to. And you've done that very well. You know, we need to, and you've done that very well, and I just want to wish you the very best in your future endeavors, and I hope that we will get to see you again at some of our college events.
You know, thank you so much. I have really enjoyed it, working here with the staff and the faculty. It's been fun. Even though we had a couple of moments, it's been great. I have to tell this story. I've always told people, working at a college was one of my, one of my dreams. Outside of the birth of my children, my college days were the best days of my life. You know how you'd be on one side, because college is always so positive. Well, I got the chance to be on the other side, and it's the same. I loved it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And not wanting to leave anybody out, I want to recognize Dr. Shirley Windle. Dr. Windle is also retiring after how many years?
Thirty-eight.
I think that speaks highly of Dr. Windle. If you look at what's happened to this nursing program in the Kansas City-Kansas Community College, one of the very best in the state, in the metropolitan area, directly under supervision. So, Dr. Windle, thank you so much for what you provided to this college, but this entire community around health care. So thank you very much. Have a great retirement. We love it.
Okay. Are there any committee reports?
Yes, there are. I have handouts for you here, one for everyone except Mary Ann, because she has her own. We just returned from Fort Scott yesterday after we changed a flat tire on the car on the way back.
You had a flat tire?
We made it back.
Gas in the car.
And so we were asked to provide copies of this material for all of you trustees. This would be the KACC, the first sheet you'll see there is, has the mission and the vision, the member colleges, and on the back of that, you'll see some purpose statements there of KACC with the slogan "Education Goes to Work." The second one is the guiding principles that we have agreed as an association, as a group, that will lead us through certainly this upcoming legislative session. So you will see in here, you want to call this the legislative slate, you know, the legislative agenda, whatever the case may be, but these will be the guiding principles we'll use moving forward. The third page is a copy of the Good News newsletter, and it, actually, it's a one-sheeter. What we intend to do at KACC in this legislative session is, the articles that the colleges submit to the KACC office, we need to keep submitting those articles and those items, but they are asking, you see, I made a note on the top of the page there, two stories by January 15th. In addition to what it is that we are submitting, and I'm not sure if Kelly is submitting that.
Kelly does.
Kelly does. Okay. So we want to try to identify a couple of those pieces, a couple of those articles, where our students, programs, faculty, or whomever have received at least regional, if not national, recognition for some accomplishments. And the goal is that out of the KACC office, they will provide a one-sheet, sort of info-sheet to the legislators individually every Monday. So if each college submits a couple of those articles, this would be in addition to the articles she sends as well. So they may be used as duplicate, but we want to flood the legislators with that information during the session. The third sheet, or the, let's see, that's the fourth one now. I think I'm on the fourth one, the last one. I made a copy from the Cloud County Community College. It's like a fact sheet. Now, you'll have to look down here to see how colorful it is, because yours is in black and white, but they've taken their school colors. There is a ton of information about their college on this sheet, front and back, and I think this is an excellent idea, you know, in an excellent format, for us to have. Faculty members could use this if they go out to speak or go to a meeting, certainly administration, certainly the trustees can use. There is just a ton of information here about their college, their numbers, several things about their numbers, everything from how many campuses, to how many degree programs, to how many athletic teams, all the way up to how many students are attending. Their academic scholarship grid is included on there, notation that there are 105-plus scholarships available, all of that stuff right on the front page, and then in the back, athletics, academic degrees are highlighted, transfer programs and their degrees, student life, clubs and organizations, a little map as to where they're located. There's a ton of information on this. I think it's extremely thoughtful and well-done and would, you know, could prove beneficial, particularly during the legislative session and time as we encounter and meet with, you know, our legislators, but just any time of the year, I think it will be great. So the meeting was good. We had some training on developing our elevator speeches, 30 seconds. We had to, we had to, we had to first identify why we care about Kansas City-Kansas Community College, why we care about Kansas community colleges, the, what, you know, they bring to the table. Then we had to, you had to have a partner, and you had to share it in 30 seconds, and Linda timed this, and she cut us off, you know, when the 30 seconds got there. Then you had to switch partners and do it again, and you switch partners and do it again. By the time we did it the last time, you pretty well had it, you know, had it down, because you often have just a moment when you're speaking with a legislator or somebody like that. You often have just about a half a minute sometimes, maybe not much more than that. And so we went through that exercise there, and about 15 minutes or less, and it was very productive, very thoughtful, so.
Who was your partner?
I partnered with a gentleman from Independence Community College, one of the trustees from Pratt, and finally, one of the trustees from Dodge City.
Don, I would, and maybe you've already done that, but I would certainly think that particularly the elevator speech and this fact sheet, that would be great to give to Jim Beechwood to also share with Trizzolo.
That's why I was sure, to be sure that Dr. Gibbons, Dr. Lindahl, and Dr. Vitale got a copy of it.
Okay. We didn't get a copy.
In addition, I would tell you that the group voted not to host the legislative reception in Washington, D.C. this year. There was not indication, I think there were only three colleges that indicated they thought they were going to participate in the National Legislative Summit this year. So that cost about $4,000 for KACC to put that on. They usually divide that cost, and each college pays $400 or $500 to cover whatever the cost ends up being. However, we did talk about moving forward to identify earlier in the calendar year, if we want to do that in the following year's legislative session, so that we could appropriately secure the location, get the invites out, get it on the legislators' calendars, the staffers' calendars, and do it a little bit more probably effectively or efficiently. So we will not be, the KACC will not be hosting a legislative reception in Washington, D.C. this year. PTK Day is, I believe, the 12th of February, 13th maybe, 12th, in Topeka. That will be the next KACC quarterly meeting as well, and we always have students attending that and their parents, and usually a number of people from Stacy Tucker and others from staff and administration, and certainly Mary Ann and I will be going for the KACC meeting as well. Any questions?
I'd like to add a couple of things. As a young man, Cook, who is chairman for our KACC, is going to run for the National Board, and I'm going to try to help him a little bit, especially with Texas, because Texas is our largest community college in our region.
State in our region.
In our region. So I'm, I meet with him next week. I have lunch with him. Anybody else that want to help me? You're welcome.
Jerry Cook is from Johnson County Community College, trustee.
Okay. The other thing is, on January the 6th, I was already engaged in having a forum, and I'm going to add the educational component to it. I've gotten area agency on the agent to pay for the food, and we're going to have a host of legislators at the tech center, it's January the 6th at 1:00. If anybody's interested and attended, please let me know.
Thank you both.
Zero. I said I got them.
Any other committee reports? And I think we will be going to unfinished business.
And unfinished business, I would like to recommend approval of the request that was presented last month, on the assistance from Attorney Wynn on the wording. It was, they wanted to add two parcels to the State Avenue Community Improvement District.
As proposed by Merle Bland and as discussed by the college at the last meeting in... Your microphone. As proposed by Mr. Merle Bland and as discussed by the trustees at the last meeting. Your request was for me to see if there were any legal issues that I had. None. It's a decision, it's a policy decision that you're going to make, and you're going to decide whether or not to add those parcels. I understood that you found that there was some benefit to it. Mr. Bland made his case, and Mr. Rios asked me before what my response would be, and it was ready for action by the trustees.
So I move approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And so it's up to me now to work with Mr. Bland and come back at those things for your final signature. Am I right? I understand.
Yes.
Okay. Is there any other unfinished business? Discussing.
Yeah, we approved the audit. Yeah, we approved the audit. I did have one other thing. I know it stated that Jim Beechwood would be presenting Trizzolo's plan and report. Obviously, it's not going to occur at this meeting. We want to make sure that that occurs in January.
Yes. It's on my calendar. He's presenting that to me and to the cabinet, and then it will go to the board, and I think it'll be presented to the board in the January meeting.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other unfinished business?
Move for adjournment.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.